Mr. Griffith, we've got a recognition here.
We do. Ms. Stephanie Lewis, which is one of our own. I will just turn it over to Ms. Paige Hill, the principal at South Pittsburgh High School, and she can sing praises of Ms. Lewis.
Y'all don't need to sing it. You're all late. Ms. Lewis is one of our teachers, and she has been teaching English there for several years. And now she's teaching AP Lit. She's done that for the past three years, I think. And so we're very happy that she does that. She's a volunteer because she is our student council sponsor. And through student council, she wasn't there, you were last, I mean, in spirit she was because of COVID. So, and she did actually do student council. And so this past year, she was in at full time. And so they did so many activities, so many things around our school. One of the best things was positive T-shirt Tuesday, so we all wore positive T-shirts on Tuesday. She just, she does so much at our school as far as helping our students. She started senior seminar class this semester, so we're extremely happy with that. And our AP Lit scores were wonderful, far above the national average, which is great. Seventy-six percent, the national average of sixty point one. So, very thrilled with that. And she's also brought up our reading and ACT scores, so we were level five in that this year. So, happy about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. And let me say this about Ms. Lewis. The key word here is volunteer. She goes above and beyond what she is paid to do. So, she was recognized by the Tennessee School Board Association, and will receive the plaque in September at the annual fall district meeting as we go to Squatch County. So, thank you, Ms. Lewis.
And she'll be in the running for the state.
That is correct.
Level also.
Yes.
Moving on, do I have a motion to approve this board agenda, as you had read? I'll make that motion.
That's a consent.
No, that's just the board agenda.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? I believe there's a couple items. Mr. Griffith, we need a little bit of information on Ms. Blantet. You want to pull W?
H, too.
You people want to pull H?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith, Mr. Nunley, do you have anything you want?
No, no, sir.
Mr. Griffith, explain to us what the changes are.
And the weed eating thing.
Basically, item eight was just a cleanup, and that individuals would be run through our Raptor system for approval. So, it was basically just a cleanup to more visitors to our schools.
I was a little concerned, because you know, we have school groups who come to the Holocaust thing, and if I understand right, every child who comes will have to sign in?
It'll be to sign in for the child, but if they have an ID, they'll be run through the system, yes.
Okay. Because we'll have groups of sixty kids usually.
Kids don't have the ID, so they'll be.
Just the adult chaplains.
Yeah, chaplains.
I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Griffith, what about the dress code? Isn't it about, I read over it, isn't it about the same as last year?
It is the same, but.
Are there any changes in it?
Well, there was questions, what we're having, if there's holes below the knee, if we're going to permit shorts, why, why are we having issues about holes below the knee?
Any other questions on those two?
I want to ask about, you're going to ask.
Ms. Blantet?
Well, I want to talk to you a little bit about W.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that we don't need a position, because we do. We have limited number of maintenance people for nine schools to take care of. And I know the ones that we have work very, very hard. But, the mowing. Do you know exactly, Mr. Brown's not here, is he?
No.
Do you know exactly where he mows?
He mows the Quibble campuses, mows Jasper Elementary Campus, and that's all right now, yes.
Because all the other schools at South Pittsburgh, and I think a couple of other places, too, are paying to have it done. And mainly because, Mr. Griffith, when he comes and mows, he does the sloppiest job you've ever seen.
Correct.
He throws grass everywhere, he doesn't clean up, he does a lick here and a lick there, and he's gone. That's the reason most people have quit using him. So, I'm not against a position being created, but is this person going to help him and go behind him and weed eat and maybe blow off some of the mess they make?
This is primarily a weed eater, yes. That is correct. He is going to be the groomsmen of the groundskeeper.
Okay. Let me ask him one more thing. For the schools that pay themselves to have their yards mowed or PTO pays for it, is there any way we could help them out a little bit with that mowing cost? Because I don't know, what do you pay yours out of, Ms. Hill?
Well, out of our general fund.
Okay.
Five hundred dollars a month.
And Ms. Powers, I think the PTO has been doing that. So, how much, do you know how much you spend a month?
They pay you for eight hundred dollars for ten mows.
It just needs to get better, Mr. Griffith. I mean, you need to jack him up if you would. He does not, he does not mow.
Trust me, when I get jacked up, I will go downhill.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm the one that had to bring it up, but I think I've got several here that agree with me about the mowing.
Hey, raise your hand if you agree. One of the things that, and we talked about it, is that at Whipple Elementary, I went there one day, and there were big, like, logs as big as I am, that's a pretty good-sized log of hunks of grass. And it's ugly, and parents really have their drawers in a lot, and so did I.
Yes, ma'am.
If we could maybe get a system working good, I think if we could get a good system going, the schools might use our mowing mower and weed eater again.
Correct.
But you can talk to the principals about that.
Any other items that we need to discuss? Hearing none, do I have a?
It's not on the agenda, but do we have a count yet of students?
They're gradually coming in, yes.
And our population is dropping?
Right at about, well, we're staying steady in some areas and dropping in others. And that seems to be the trend with other districts as well.
It just concerns me for the long run.
How many have we had very many sign up for our homeschool?
Well, we've got about, right at, right the other side of fifty, so twenty forty-five people.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Nunley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, can we talk about good things now?
We'll wait till then.
Okay. I'll try to be nice.
Just activity of note here, before we get into old business, I'll go ahead and throw this in here, just the TSBA Fall District Meeting is September the fifteenth at Squatch County Middle School at four thirty. If you are attending, just let Ms. Ruby know.
What date was that given?
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
And they're feeding.
That's going to be after hour, yeah, they'll feed you. They'll feed you.
They'll feed you, too, Ms. Stephanie.
I'll go for food.
I go anywhere if you feed me, and I like to clean up dishes.
Mr. Griffith, you want to update us where we are on our capital projects?
Yes. Got a lot of projects still going on through our Escher funds, the HVAC upgrades, window upgrades are about to wrap up, door upgrades have been completed. HVAC is the biggest thing right now, we're waiting on supply. We've got a lot slated to get done, but like I said, right now, maintenance is focused on the barn units at South Pittsburgh. Hopefully, we can get one to two in a day to where we can go ahead and close those out. So, the middle school project, the two contractors are working on the value engineering list that they received from Architect. They should, those numbers should be into us by Friday at noon. And then the special call meeting to approve a contractor would be on the fifteenth of this month at twelve thirty.
Mr. Griffith, this is my first time doing this. So, when you get the two bids in, after you go over the value engineering and see what the law, how much they have decreased their amount for the school building, will you talk to us about that, or will you make the decision, or will we just vote?
No, no.
How does this happen?
You will be fully informed of what you're looking at. And you'll have, you will have the references available to, if there's questions there. So, now, you'll be comparing the two lists, and we, it didn't roll out to say, look, contractors, here's, show us where you can save money. They all have the same list of where you had apples to apples. So, that list will be brought before you all. Square footage of the building is not going to be compromised.
We'll get a chance to look at that and talk among ourselves. And then the twelve thirty meeting will be a vote?
Yes.
Then we still.
Because contract, contract would need to be signed, the bids expire on the nineteenth. So, in order to lock those bids in, without a rebid, we would have to, we would have to go ahead and lock those in, pending the additional funding if needed by the county commission.
That's what I was about to ask. We have to go back to them, and we know it's going to take more money than they've.
And as I told you all earlier, value engineering is not to shave the nine million dollars off, it's to make sure that we're doing what's best for the taxpayers, to get the best bang for their buck, and then be able to go back before the commission and say, look, we need six million as opposed to nine million.
Hopefully, that's a.
Has Mr. Gillum, has he looked through that list?
He has. He's continuing to do so, and done a very, very good job for us in finding where we can save some cost and not compromise what we're getting.
Will he be here for that meeting?
He will be.
Moving on to B, Jasper Middle School, we need to reestablish the two modular units to be surplus property, Mr. Griffith.
Yes. If you all recall, some time ago, you all established those as a surplus property to be demolished or given away. The contractor that was awarded the bid has backed out on that. So, basically, what I'm asking you all to do is go ahead and reestablish those as surplus property, and for us to look at options of running that in the paper as far as a giveaway or demolition. That's on the current property.
Probably no way to get any money out of them, is there?
We'll be like.
I know, that's what I was thinking, but I think that everybody needs to know that.
There's a reason that they backed out.
Can anybody bid on those?
Yes.
Any individual?
Once we, once we post, we will run it in the local paper, and once we do that, we'll take sealed bids on that.
You need two buildings?
No, I don't need a bunch of junk. I'm eighty-one years old, I'm going to croak any minute, and I don't need any more junk.
We're still going to record that they're junk, if somebody looks at them.
You know they're junk, and I know they're junk.
We know some junk dealers in town. So, yes, that's where we're at. So, I think if you all would go ahead and vote on that, then we would be able to relinquish our past contract. There was no contract signed, it was just they didn't come get them.
So, do we need a motion?
Need a motion to.
So moved.
So moved. Ms. Hooper?
I'll second.
Second. Ms. Blantet, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. I guess you'll be hitting the local papers tomorrow, Mr. Griffith.
Yes, sir. Also, Mr. Chairman, we've got Ms. Samantha Westmoreland Robinson, that I did approve earlier today. We have conversation to speak to this board regarding some issues that we had arise, so at your.
Ms. Samantha, you can come to the podium, we'll allow you to speak on your, on your issues. Just state your name and your address. Mr. Rains will have you five minutes, and he will let you know when you get, with a minute left, he'll let you know, kind of wrap it up.
Can we just do district instead of address while we're broadcasting?
Yeah.
I don't figure anybody knows where I live.
Oh, okay.
I'll just say Jasper.
Is that okay, Mr. Rains?
Just tell us who you are.
Yes, we don't.
I can tell you later, I just don't want it on lock.
No, she, we don't need to post her address.
Okay.
You tell me when, Mr. Chairman.
Tell us who you are first.
Yeah.
I'm Samantha Robinson. I have a daughter currently in Jasper Middle School. She's been in Jasper forever, but she's in seventh right now. That's all she's gone is Jasper.
That's all I know.
So, I'm speaking on behalf of her and all the students at JMS, and I have quite a bit to say, but I'm just going to start with the student handbook from Jasper Middle School. And the code of respect says, "A Jasper Middle School student is a person of honor who does not cheat, intimidate, lie, or spread rumors, and does not tolerate such behaviors in others." And then it says, "Because I'm a JMS student and a person of honor, I will treat all my classmates with thoughtfulness and kindness." I just did a few of them. "I speak positively to and about my school and my classmates. I accept responsibility for my actions and my learning." And I have a point to all this, but then we've got the non-discrimination policy statement that's in the handbook, which I don't think I said, but all parents read this and sign this at the beginning of the school year, and the kids. So, it says, "It is the policy of the Marion County school system not to discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, or disability in educational programs." And it also says, "You have to take responsibility for your actions, so you will be held responsible only for the things you do or fail to do." I highlighted some things because everything's not important for today. But, so, under character, it says that the staff and faculty at JMS are committed to teaching our students ethical values and standards of conduct and character. A few of those points on there say respect, treat others with respect, follow the golden rule, which is use good manners, not bad language, caring, be kind, be compassionate, and show you care. So, as far as discipline, for basically not following any of the rules in the handbook, the Marion County Board of Education has established a student code of conduct discipline policy, and Jasper Middle School abides by this policy, but also has established the following guidelines. Students who have been suspended or received four or more office referrals will not be allowed to attend field trips, dances, or extracurricular activities during the nine weeks that the referrals are received. And the board expects all school staff, students, and parents to assume responsibility for appropriate behaviors in the schools. Faculty, students, and parents have the right to expect safety, non-discrimination, and a focus on learning in the schools. And then there are four different categories, I'm not reading all that, but there are four different categories for discipline and for actions. But I am going to talk about one of them, which is category two. And it says, "Offenses that may result in suspension or referral outside of the school. If any student is placed in ISS or in OSS, he or she will not be allowed to participate in any school function, including field trips, athletic practices, or contests." So, the first time offense is five-day suspension, second time offense is ten-day suspension, and third time is referral to the Board of Education for expulsion. And that's very important for why I'm here today. Some of those within that category are disrespect to teachers, staff appears.
One minute, go ahead.
Harassment, chronic disruption, sexual misconduct, bullying, threatening, hazing, or intimidating behavior. I'm going to skip over to, it says, I already said that they're not allowed to attend field trips. Students may not participate in rewards or trips if they have been suspended in the nine-week period prior to the trip. And there was a bullying prevention program that each teacher said that they attended based off of the handbook for how to handle things, what's appropriate, what's inappropriate. And then on the Marion County Board of Education website, it's basically some of the same, knowing and placing a student or students in reasonable fear of physical harm to the student or damage to the student's property, causing emotional distress to the student or students, creating a hostile education environment.
Hold your thought right there.
I was about to get to what I actually came to say.
This, okay, this board can allow you to continue if they so.
I move, we give her another two minutes.
Okay.
My second.
Two minutes. You can continue, thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll just bypass the extract, but it's basically the same thing. But, so, last school year, so that would be the 2021, 2022 school year, there were my daughter and four of her friends, some cousins, but they're all friends, and they're all black, or biracial children. So, the principal, as you know, was Ramona McIntyre, and vice principal was Amanda Chris. Our children were threatened to be shot and killed three times, three separate occasions, three different settings. All three were reported to Ramona, or Ms. McIntyre, and Ms. Chris. They didn't take any of this seriously. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm pretty sure based on that definition, that's definitely a direct violation of the Zero Tolerance Bullying Act. So, the first death threat occurred at recess on February ninth, and they were all playing a football game, basically, and most of the black kids were on one team, and then there was another team. We'll just say this student decided to let the kids know, because he was losing his game, "Back in my day, you would have been shot for that, winning the game." After recess, on the way back to class, another student said to them, "Since it's Black History Month, y'all should just go back to Africa." At that point, our kids decided that they're going to tell a teacher, although they've already told teachers, this time they were serious about it. They told the teachers, and they told us this time. So, when these students were sent to the office by the teachers, they're the two, came out of the office yelling and holding their fists up, "We told you we weren't going to get in trouble, white power, white power." Then they started singing the National Anthem. Ms. McIntyre tried to say that she really didn't know anything about any of this, but she acknowledged my daughter and another child, and asked them, "How are things going since everything was reported?" She told another child that, "You're just too popular for these things to, you know, be said to you. There's no way that it's true." To my child, she told her that it was just a misunderstanding. It took us parents to come down to that office, that school, the next day. Ramona, Ms. McIntyre wasn't there, but Ms. Chris was. We spoke with her, it was four, five parents, and we told her exactly what happened, she took her notes, she said she'd investigate, she said she didn't know anything about it. And then the following day, so two days later after the incident, at the end of the day, the two students were told that they would be suspended for five days. After my research, and I'm sure you may or may not have heard about my status that I made on Facebook, I've had lots of people come to me, and I've learned that one of the students who supposedly got suspension did not indeed get his suspension. He was just told to stay home for the five days, as if he were suspended. The other student, he actually got his suspension, but his parents chose not to send him, so he just stayed home. Another situation where a white Caucasian girl heard in the hallway, this same main boy who keeps talking about killing them, so this is the second incident. If I could get my hands on a gun, I would shoot one of our children, I'm not going to say their name. She doesn't deserve to be here, none of them deserve to be here. The girl who overheard him basically cussed him out a little bit. A teacher heard her, she got in trouble and was given a delayed detention. And when the mother found out, she asked her, "Why would you say that? You're not going to just randomly go cuss out a child, why would you say that to him?" And she told her, so her mom took her to the office, and she was told to write a statement. So, I'm sorry, I think I bypassed, but our five kids wrote a statement and sent it to the office. This child also wrote a statement, it went to the office on the second time. So, they found out somehow, these kids, that this girl wrote the statement for them, and she was threatened that she would be raped for telling on her friend. Nothing, again, was done about that. So, as I previously said, no field trips, no athletic, anything like that. So, this child continued to be in Beta Club, though on the field trip with the Beta Club students. He also was on the football team and allowed to be on the football team. And, sorry.
No reason to be sorry.
We were told, because at that point we were done dealing with Ms. McIntyre and Ms. Chris, we came to Central, or to here, we spoke with Mr. Griffith and Mr. Phillips, and we basically gave a rundown of the situation and what had happened and what's been going on, that we felt like nothing was being done, our kids weren't being heard, we weren't being heard. So, what's the next step? So, in our heads, we're taking the steps, the kids go to the teachers, then they go to their principal, then we go to the principal, nothing, so then we come to the superintendent. So, Mark, Mr. Griffith, I've already spoke with him today, but he told us that this kid would be expelled, and he would receive, should receive, three sixty-five for his three death threats on our children. And there would be an opportunity to speak before the board, as protocol. And I've later found out that none of that even happened. I was also told that he would not be back at Jasper Middle School. He is indeed back at Jasper Middle School. On the first day of school, he was actually in line with me when I dropped my, behind me when I dropped my child off. So, that was the first thing she heard me say before, or the last thing she heard me say, basically, before she got out of the car to go to school for her first day of school, is that the boy who's threatening to kill you is right behind us, and he's walking in the building with you. So.
What age?
This is, they were in sixth grade last year, so they would have been eleven, twelve. It's the spring, so I would assume that they were all twelve by then. And all my daughter, my daughter and all my friends were. And all my daughter, my daughter and all my friends are twelve, so I would assume this child was twelve as well. So I'm gonna wrap it up, and I'm just gonna say that, as I said, this kid is still in school. My daughter's come home, we've had two days of school, and I've talked to another parent, and he's just there, just staring him down, I guess his parents told him not to speak anymore, but he's just staring him down, letting him know that, you know, he's still here. And, of course, Ms. McIntyre and Ms. Chris were removed from Jasper Middle School, I don't know, their choice or whatever, but they were removed, but they are still a principal and still a vice principal, after they've already failed our children. And I just want our kids, to color, and any kid, to be treated like they matter. What they're going through matters. As you all know, there's several school shootings. So anytime someone threatens to kill someone, it should be taken seriously. And they should not be in school. Maybe later, after they've been punished, they may be learn their lesson, but immediately, they should not be still in school. So, I mean, if you have any questions for me, I'm here. You can contact me, I can leave my number, my email, whatever. But something needs to be done, because nothing's being done. I don't know why the proper.
What was the?
What happened? What was the disclaimer?
Exactly what, what she said is, is.
Five days.
The first offense was five days, the second and third, nothing.
Keep in mind that.
Was this ever reported to DHA?
The superin, no ma'am.
That's what I thought.
But.
Is that mandatory?
It's not necessarily ma, it's not necessarily mandatory, but the.
It's common sense.
But it's expected.
If there's evidence.
There's a major.
If there's evidence there, it should've went to the disciplinary hearing authority.
There was evidence. There are a total of seven letters, five of our kids, black kids, and two other children on the other incidents.
And what the.
Wrote letters.
What the DHA does, it's made up of administrators, and it puts five different eyes on the evidence. They vet that process, and then it comes to me. As you, myself and you all don't render the punishment, it has to get to us. So at that time, that's when it would've been, we're the appeal process for it. Not for, not for the victim, keep in mind, for the individual.
Offender.
That caused the action.
Offender.
So, that's, that's where, that's where we were at, and yes, when I met, I said, was made aware of the letter, it goes to DHA. More than likely, something in the past like this has got a three sixty-five. Yes, she is accurate in saying what I said, there is no question. But the administration either did not feel the evidence was accurate and did not send it to DHA.
How much more serious was it gonna be to get to you?
His job is it to ensure that the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me just interject something right here. We have received a call from a law firm on this, so before the board gets too deep into it, my advice to you as the attorney is to withhold comment because of this threatened litigation. This proceeding is recorded, so anything that any member of the board says here is gonna be recorded. It possibly come, could come back in a lawsuit, if one's filed. No lawsuit has been filed at this point in time, but we have received a call from a law firm about the incident. And my instruction to Dr. Griffith was not to make any comment, you know, to them without having counsel present, and that's the same advice I'm gonna give to the board members, is to not comment on this, it is under investigation. But if there's gonna be a lawsuit, then the board members need to remain silent and let the legal process work out.
I think we've been silent long enough. This has started in February, February ninth, to be exact, was when our children reported it. Wrote their five statements before they left school. I'm waiting on my daughter outside, "Where do you," and she finally gets here, "Where you been?" I had to write a letter, I had to write a statement for what happened today. And at that point, obviously, I had no idea what she was talking about, so she let me know. So our kids are sitting here crying while they're writing these letters, handing them to the principal, vice principal, both, I don't know, but they were in the office. And all they can say is, "It's he say, she say." That's the main statement, "It's he say, she say." I have copies of anything and everything that was done regarding the incident from students, our students, other students, I don't have names of the witnesses, but there were witness statements as well. And they all agree that our kids were correct in what they heard. But somehow, it's he say, she say. I don't understand that, that doesn't make any sense to me. How is it he say, she say?
I'm just curious, when a threat's made like that, is it not mandatory to alert the SRO and make a report on it?
Speaking of SRO, he didn't know. He heard through the grapevine about it all, but he didn't know.
The school resource officer was not aware that a child had threatened to kill another child.
The administration did not disclose to him.
Now, we're gonna relate this process.
Heard it through somebody else.
If the board wants to.
Name is actually it.
I'm not on the, I'm just gonna say, this is publicly embarrassing for our county. This is atrocious and embarrassing. I'm embarrassed as a Caucasian that has kids in this class, in this school system, I'm embarrassed for my friends, I'm embarrassed for our entire county. It makes everyone in this whole entire room look like trash.
Y'all, y'all talked about losing students.
I'm so upset.
I guarantee you, most of those students were at Jasper Middle School and are no longer there, because they didn't feel safe or protected, so they left. Two of my daughter's friends went to South Pittsburgh this year. I chose to stay because I was told that he would not be in my school, or in her school. Principal, vice principal were gone, problem's gone, but they're not gone. So, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna make it better, how are we gonna fix it?
Dr. Thacker?
Yes, sir.
How you gonna fix it?
I would rather not speak.
Okay.
As Mr. Rains had instructed, I would rather have.
So nobody's got anything to say? Nobody's gonna speak?
Are there.
Since February, we're in August, nobody's still speaking.
Mr. Griffith, are there services we can provide that would? I don't even know how to express it.
So if I hire a lawyer, I'm gonna get the answers I need, or am I still gonna be waiting?
Ms. Westmoreland, I don't know if you've hired a lawyer, I'm, I don't know who the client of the law firm that contacted the school system was, but the fact is, the school system's been contacted by a law firm. And as much as the board would, I know they're sitting here biting their tongue wanting to say something, but as their attorney, my advice has to be, don't say anything because it could come back in a future proceeding. I don't know if you spoke with this law firm, or who it was, they didn't really identify, but they contacted Dr. Griffith with questions about this particular instance, so, I mean, there, I don't know if that was you or who it was. Somebody, somebody contacted a lawyer and had them contact the school system.
With today being Monday, and tomorrow being a school business day, can we ensure the safety of these children tomorrow returning to school?
No, because he's still in school.
Is there, is there a way that the board can do something emergency to make sure that the safety of the children at Jasper Middle, specifically, the ones that were targeted and threatened, but overall, in general, the teachers, the staff, everyone at the school building will be safe tomorrow returning to school? Or should it be a situation where they're forced to withhold their children for safety precautions?
Dr. Thacker?
We, we ensure that every child's safety comes in our building. We have a SRO there every day, and we, just, with me and I have been in every classroom, so we have, I've spoken with Ms. Robinson on the phone, I'll hear twice, I'll hear on Friday. I know her concerns. We will do everything we can to ensure the safety of the kids.
I don't know if y'all watch the news, but the SRO can't be everywhere. Or else it wouldn't be where we are.
I just have one question, which is not directly toward the, the DHA hearing, which he did not get, which would've expelled him for three sixty-five, right? Could, could've expelled him for three sixty-five. Can that, it's too late to have a hearing now?
Ten days, you got a ten day.
Ten days, okay.
So our kids are punished because Ms. McIntyre didn't find it necessary to do what she's supposed to do as the principal? That makes zero sense. So what is, what are, what's the protocol when the principal and the vice principal don't meet their job? They just get moved to another school to do the same exact thing? Because they're still vice principal and principal somewhere else in the county.
I'm gonna advise the board members not to comment on that.
This is ridiculous. What are y'all here for? I'm trying to be calm, I feel like I've been calm this whole time, but what are y'all here for? Why was I allowed to speak today if you don't have anything for me? Can't say you didn't know about it. Everybody might not know about it, but majority of y'all know about it.
No, we didn't.
I know Mr. Griffith does, and I know Ryan does, Mr. Phillips. So. Feel nothing.
I look forward to hearing our response to it.
Awesome job.
Before you adjourn, we've got a special called meeting on Monday, August fifteenth, at twelve-thirty. One item on the agenda, and that is the new JMS Middle School. Our next scheduled meeting will be September, Monday, September the twelfth, at five o'clock. Ms. Hooper, you got something good you can say?
Yeah, I'm not gonna say anything I'm not supposed to say, because Mark Rains was put over here by me to see that I didn't. Two good things, Roger Payne's chorus at Whitwell Middle School has been invited to sing at Opryland in Nashville with, for the Tennessee School Board Association's annual meet. And although they're donating, or they call it an honorary in the TSBA, a thousand dollars, that won't get sixty, sixty members there, and by George, they, he does such a great job, and those kids have worked hard, and somehow, we need to find the money for them to at least spend one night and be sure they get a bus and don't have to walk there. And the second thing is, on the fifteenth, we have a student from Whitwell High School, Grace White, who will be recognized by TSBA at our annual, whatever we're having, whatever that thing is, where they feed us. That's all I have to say, I'm a lush.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
I'll say.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?